Who's going to call it to order? Michael.
Michael Parker called the meeting to order. I told Brian to tell him.
Hey, Mike, you want to get started? You're muted.
Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Call the meeting, the Board of Finance, regular meeting to order. We see Kathy Devlin, I see Phil Salca, Joe Talasano. I think I'm here. Is there anyone else?
Bill Meyer.
Yeah, Bill Meyer, present.
Meyer is present?
Yep.
Tonight, one of the first items is a discussion of the revenue situation that we have. To tee it up, I know that we have about a $2 million shortfall between the budget and the current revenue projections. And that's without reference to the revaluation.
Are you going to hear me?
As long as you speak up there.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yep. Not as loud as it'll go.
Unfortunately.
Okay.
I think that this is something that demands some conversation on our part. I'd like to hear what people have to say. In the past, we have always taken the revaluation and turned it into a revenue-neutral situation by reducing the mill rate accordingly. I'm not sure we have much leeway in that matter, but I'd like to hear from everybody else on the board as to what their thoughts might be.
If you...
Well, I haven't...
Hold on. Mike's having technical difficulties.
It's beyond COVID at this point. Glasses and other things are in the way. Let me just walk you through a few things first, and then that discussion probably will gel a little bit more clearly. So, we did send out a lot in the package. And so what we're doing is we're going to just show on the screen those items here, the more relevant items that were sent out. And we can look at the revenue budget itself, any budget gaps, and then we can discuss the options, go through some, put into historical perspective, and then actually proceed along trying to figure out how we go about addressing the situation. So if you look at this first page here, you'll see that the property tax revenue in the first line of $25,567.716, that represents a full increase based on revow. And so it's a 6.41% increase. The second item is state aid, which is essentially... Well, it's actually gone up over last year. The, going forward to the... And then after that, we have licenses and permits, interest miscellaneous, transfers in, et cetera. And in this section here, we do not put any fund balance contribution in there. It just says zero right now because we're trying to figure out what the gap might be. So it shows a $35,195,078 for projected revenue, which would be a 4.22% increase over prior year. Down below is the expenditures, which you have listened to. The town's budget at 1.22%, the Board of Ed's budget at 2.92%. We have a debt service going down by $91,000, or 5.5%. And then, as it stands right now, capital projects is going to be a level funding from last year at zero increase. So when you look at the total expenditures of $35,684,307, come up with a gap of $489,229, and it shows you there what a mill would be, $927,465. So if you move to the second page, we tried to look at what does this gap mean? And assuming that the mill rate remains the same on this particular schedule at 27.37, that gap of $489,229 can be made up in a variety of ways. And what we have shown you is if you were to increase the mill rate by any of the increments in the left-hand column, a quarter, a third, a half, what would that mean? And then how much of fund balance would you have to contribute to offset? So, and then when you contribute that fund balance, if you look in the fifth column over, it shows you how the fund balance would diminish with each contribution. And it would also show you the percentage of the fund balance remaining at that given mill rate. So, in this case here, we, the finance department, and this is all obviously open to discussion, but for purposes of presentation, we're assuming that you would fund that balance from, that gap from fund balance. That would leave you at 16.9%. This is the top line in that table. And that 16.9% is the equivalent of two months expenditures, which is the recommended amount of fund balance from the GFOA. And we feel as though that that would be the best option. However, we're showing other options here on this page. So the gap equivalent itself is 0.53 mills. I know some say that we had a revow and taxes should be lowered. But, you know, in terms of, we have, dealing with numbers and logic and dealing with the left-hand side of the brain says that we have to analyze what's going on here. I know if we deal, what we've done historically, we say, okay, you know, we've done revow, and there's an increase that's built into that revow. That is correct. But essentially, you have to understand that you are revoling every year for everything that's new that comes online. You are collecting the same amount of tax every year in a five-year period as your prior revow, even though that property itself is going up annually or going down. What the revow does at the five-year mark is to put a new stake in the ground and says, you know what? The evaluations you have right now are getting stale. You need to revow and come up to what the values are now. So, in essence, a revow is a delayed increase, which would have happened if you valued every year as opposed to on your fifth year. That's just an item for you to consider. So now, let's go on to the next page and look at the historical...
I'll rotate it.
Okay, I'm going to say it's crooked.
Yeah, no, because it comes inside, but...
So let's look at some recent budget history to try to paint a backdrop and get an idea as to, you know, what's going on backstage here. If you look at the last four budget years, including the one that we're estimating, so we're counting that as one of the four years, you have basically a 2.5% budget increase expenditure-wise every year. That's right on mark with a state OPM saying that all towns should be going at 2.5%. That expense growth is not outrageous. It is right in line. It's consistent. If you look at percentage of annual increase in our total revenue from property tax, it is 4.5% a year. And that seems, you know, it's probably a little higher than inflation. But if you look at the taxes as a percentage of total revenue, it's kind of in line at 71.65%. In the fourth column over, underestimated FY '22, is kind of close to the four-year average. If you look at state aid, that's gone down on average of 2% a year for the last four years. So you're constantly trying to address the widening, ever-so-widening, maybe slow widening at this point, although it wasn't four years ago, ever-so-widening gap between state and town or local taxes. So that percentage is skewing higher in the 70s now and skewing lower into the low 20s for state aid. If you look at our fund balance contribution, and we're not, it's at 1.26%, not counting what we're going to do, what we're proposing this year. And I'll get into that discussion a little bit more in the succeeding pages. Other financing sources, that's our fees and contributions from the other funds. That's pretty consistent over the four-year period. Not much change there. So again, it just totals up to a bottom line $489,229 gap. Move on to the next page, and we've expanded that analysis to actually a seven-year revenue comparison in property tax itself. And if you look at that over the years, you can see in fiscal '19, there was the bump because the prior year to that was the midterm tax increase. But you'd see on average, that a seven-year average, that property taxes has increased about 4% in town in a seven-year, average 4% a year. Our budgets increase around 2.5% a year. And then if you get down to the bottom and you look at the fund balance contribution, if you count the $489 network suggesting that you put in this year, you're looking at a $4.1 million fund balance contribution over the past seven years, the equivalent of 4.5 mills. So you've basically given the taxpayer back 4.5 mills over seven years, even though you've raised their taxes lying below that, four mills. So this comparison is really showing a hallmark of stability and consistency across the board here that basically, even though we've had a few ups and downs in the long haul, we're pretty even in terms of the stability of the budget. And I mean, when you consider things like, and I don't mean this in a negative way because I firmly believe that education is very, very important. When you consider things like this was a pretty good education budget this year at 2.92%. That's $719,000. You're looking at 3/4 of a mill automatically. So if you consider that on an annual basis, that education budget, that's going to be the floor of that. And it may go higher. It could go to a mill, it could go to a mill and a half. That's built in every year in your budget. And the only option that is left to us at this point would level state aid because we know next year's state budget is going to be the same as this year's state budget. The only option left is to look at the local tax revenue picture or to try to become really creative on the local level and start taxing certain things that we're allowed to do that I guess we don't do. For example, 10% entertainment tax on tickets, like concerts at four-town fairgrounds and things like that. We would need an ordinance to do something like that. But, I mean, other than the property tax, the car tax, and the personal property tax, those really are our only revenue options. So that kind of puts into perspective where we are in terms of what we can get. The next page, I don't think we need that because we've looked at that on the other page. So you say to yourself, well, hey, look at, we're tapped out here. We want to go, you know, where does revow bring us? Well, if you look at the first two columns on this sheet, you look at what we were budgeted in 2021 at 27.37, and then you look at the impact of revow, and you say, well, what would give me the same revenue? Well, what would give you the same revenue would be to lower the mill rate down to 25.91. And it would give us the exact same revenue we had last year. So that would be 0% increase percentage-wise for taxes. That would leave you with a $2 million budget gap, as you can see on that page on the shortfall. And then you just follow that analysis across the page, and you can see where you are. If you lowered it to 1 mill, now to 26.37, you'd see the resulting gap is $1.4 million, and so on and so forth, until you go all the way to the right where you go to the 40, where we keep the mill rate the same, and it's the $489,229, which we just talked about before, that we could fund from fund balance without doing any harm to our reserves. So that's kind of the revenue overview picture. You know, as your chief financial officer, I do worry about fund balance. I do know how important or what, it is a factor. It is a factor in the bond rating. It is a factor to the bond markets. And so I like to keep it at what is considered to be the leading-edge percentage or the best-practice percentage in the industry. And so I don't really want to go too low unless I have to go low. And I would have to say that, you know, we had a substantial contribution last year from that fund balance. And as you can see, over the four, or over that seven-year period, we've contributed quite a substantial amount of money out of our fund balance. So we're really not keeping money. We're really not making a profit. What we're really doing is we, in some years, we bank a little, and in other years, we spend a little. And in the end, we're trying to hold things consistent. So that's the revenue picture. And I would, then, after that, we have all, we sent you out the details. I mean, you can go through that detail or have gone through it, but that is just the detail. And I think we would drown unless you want to talk about it offline and call us up, we'd be glad to do that on the detail. At this, I would turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, Mike, before you go, I got a couple of questions if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So like in 2008, the people who got impacted the most with reavow were the small homeowners because the housing market crashed. Megan mentioned it's got a huge tax break. Do you know if this reavow was just broad-based or was it impacting certain segments of the housing market? And that...
Oh, it's broad-based, the entire town.
My other question is, do we have a definitive number on the federal aid that's two-year run? I know at the state level, I've gotten out late on Friday that they loosened up the criteria for use of that federal aid.
Yeah.
If we do, what that number was...
Can you forward it to that? Yes, we do. One second here.
Let me scroll your screen. Hold on.
So we're going to scroll, yeah. We'll get you to the screen here.
Got to rotate it back to, hold on.
So...
Let me just finish my thought before you answer my question. Is there a possibility to use a combination of items here over the next two years to make up for the reavow? Maybe some federal aid, maybe some cuts, maybe a modest tax increase, maybe some fund balance. Maybe, you know, I know the federal funds run for two years. And maybe we could run the runway a little longer to get whole and then pick it back up in a couple of years. Just a high-level thought.
Okay. Well, I think I have two answers for you. A is no, and B is we haven't really received definitive what you can actually do. We have a pretty general outline of what they call acceptable uses. And with that comes a lot of questions, which have not been answered yet. But you can see at the top of this page that our non-education money that we received is $1,647,35, and what we're getting for education is $356. There's two separate criterias. I didn't put down the educational criteria here. I just put down the criteria for the non-education funding. And this is stuff that you don't budget for, essentially, is what they're looking for you to do. And a lot of it has economic impact. And this money is good until December 31, 2024. So it's looking to help the, mostly things that are related to COVID-19. And if there are negative impacts to businesses or to households in town, let's say, it looks like they're trying to actually make every town, welfare's not the right word, a service, a helpful service entity, so that if there are people in town that qualify, money can pass through the town using this grant to help people who are, can't pay their rent and are getting kicked out because of COVID-19. They didn't have a job. They couldn't pay their rent. So there's all kinds of different things in here, but it's not clearly defined. You can read this, I know we didn't send this out.
So I look at this B here and saying that you could probably refund some of the salaries you've paid to public works and other individuals over the last year.
And we've been doing that through the CARES Act right now, Joe.
Yeah. We do that through the CARES Act. And what we've been instructed to do is to use up all of our CARES Act money first, which expires at the end of this year. And this is a bank account, basically, it'll last till 2024, so you don't want to touch the corpus of this money yet. So we're going to leave it there. Wait till we spend all of our CARES Act money on overtime for frontline COVID workers, et cetera, et cetera. And when that expires, then we will come to here and begin to use this on essential town things that are related to COVID, that overtime, et cetera, and then any other of the things that are qualified here on this. But there isn't anything in here that you can say, I want to plug it into the budget to save the taxpayers' money or to reduce the taxpayers' rate. In fact, they say it's strictly not intended for that use.
Is there, does this include our county allocation as well? I know there's a pretty substantial county allocation that's forthcoming.
This does not include our county allocation. We're in the dark as to what that might be at this point, Bill. But one thing it does include, and I've talked to Brian, we've talked about it, is that we can look at our full budget year last year. And if we come up short on revenue this year, this calendar year '21, we can use this money to make up for that revenue difference. Because twice, we've been told by the state to put the rate, give people 90 days extra to pay. And then people having, you know, COVID has affected the job market and the payment. So we are kind of tracking on revenue now, but we may come in a little bit under. If we do, we'll apply under this loan, under this grant to make that up, so that we will make our revenue. We won't come in short this year '21. And then it has a cascading effect that you made revenue, and then you will get money, then we'll end up going to fund balance if we have a positive, you know, difference.
But that's an if right now.
Yeah. So we are living in the world of if, but there are more, more to be coming. And, I mean, I sat in on a session with Senator Murphy, who had a session last week. I sat in a CCM one. They're going to have a follow-up one. We have all kinds of questions from town officials, back to our congressmen and our senators. And the bottom line is the Department of Treasury, USD, Department of Treasury is going to be doing this. And in most of this money, you're not going to be able to spend unless you get certification from them upfront, prior to spending. They're not going to make you, not make it a reimbursement, but they're going to look for a certification. So that's the strings that are attached to all these funds. And so they're really, I say for purposes of budget determination, I wouldn't even consider this, so.
So, Mike, I have a question about the revenue. As far as the 1.4 million in additional money that you have here, if we keep the mill rate the same, what's the breakdown as far as the additional stock? Like, for instance, the solar farms and things that have been added to the grand list? How much additional revenue was coming from that versus existing property where people's home values have been increased and now they'd be expected to pay more taxes? What's the breakdown as far as...
Are you on page one?
Well, he's just looking for grand list increase.
But that 1.4 million, as soon as I saw this sheet, I was like, oh, there's clearly an error. There's a formulating error in that intergovernmental.
There is. I saw that. That was my next question.
All right. Yeah. So that 1.4 isn't really 1.4. That 1.4 should be right around $300,000.
No.
Yeah. The intergovernmental last year was $164 higher than it is this year.
Yeah. So then it's 1.5, actually. I should be looking at the top line. 1,539,682.
Yeah, that's the property tax, right.
Okay. So my question is, how much of that is represented in additional taxable property being added versus existing property that's now valued more because of the real estate market? What's the breakdown?
Well, I would say the majority is of the real estate market. I mean, there's one, there's one big solar field right now that is under consideration. We fully accept, expect them to challenge that. And there's actually a bill in the legislature right now that says these solar fields should be taxable. They are right now trying to skirt the law by breaking, by buying a huge plot of land and then breaking it up into LLCs, smaller companies, and then having contracts from each small company. It helps them skirt the tax law. So we're taxing them. We're going to tax them on this, based on the grand list of October 1. They've already told us they're going to challenge it, so it's court fees.
How much revenue was that in question? I mean, so that revenue was figured into that?
Well, that revenue would probably be around, I think, close to a half a mill a year, over about $400,000 in taxes, most likely. So again, it's not substantial compared to everything else, but it represents growth.
Is that $400,000 represented in the 1.5 million?
Yes.
Okay. So even that's questionable, then, if we're going to be able to collect that, right?
We will most likely collect it.
Well, we will collect it.
And then if they turn around and they win their appeal, we would have to refund.
And if it's a four-year court case, it'll be settled at some point. But we will continue to collect it because we've assessed it.
And we may owe them a refund, though, if we lose.
Down the road, we may.
If we lose, the chances, well, I don't know. There are something like 11 towns that are, again, in this situation. And the irony of it is, is that the field that they're building here in town is for electricity for the southern part of the state, Fairfield County, to towns like Westport. So it's...
But that's not an immaterial fact. I mean, $400,000 is a lot of money for some.
Absolutely. No, absolutely.
So does this include the original solar field? Because I thought that came in under a...
By Lipton?
No, it did not include that, and that's taxable. But then at some point, they could then start to argue, why are we taxable and they're not? And so, all those things.
Did we lose a lot of businesses this past year that could have...
Well, I know not one restaurant, but maybe one or two.
So I mean, I guess it's fair to say, to my point, that $400,000 of this 1.5 million is in addition to the grand list in the form of the solar fields. So as far as our residential property increases, it's about 1.1 million based on the revow. Is that correct?
Yeah. And the largest increase on the gap, we're cars, to be honest with you. People were buying new cars. Percentages were going up pretty high for that, the highest. I haven't got the breakdown.
Can we get that breakdown from the assessor? Well, I just think it's helpful because I don't want people to think that we're giving them a 6% tax increase on their house that they've owned in town for 20 years. If it's actually new additions to the grand list, that's going to bring that number down.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, you know, yes, a lot of people automatically think that that's my increase personally, and it's not. There's components to it.
Well, if we could break that down through the assessor's office, I think that'd be very helpful.
I have, we'll send that out to you.
Okay. Thank you.
That was my question for Bill, Senator Bushman here.
That's good.
I have a question, Mike, if you would, please.
Yep.
During my sentence on the Board of Finance, we've gone through several reavows, reavows. And in every one of those cases, as far as I can recall, we readjusted the mill rate to make the evaluation revenue-neutral. The theory, as I understood it, was that you can't use the revow to raise taxes. In other words, the rate only gets, the tax imposed on each citizen only gets imposed when the Board of Finance actually increases the mill rate.
Yep.
Is, am I wrong about that? I mean, has...
Well, no, you're not wrong. I'm just showing you how you would make up the gap here. It's your choice as to how you want to go about doing that. I'd say what's different today than was at last revow is we were making at least 20% more in state aid at that point in time, five years ago. As you can see, four years ago...
The question I was doing is, do we really, is it really a choice that we have? Or is it that we have to follow the law and make the, and adjust the mill rate to make that...
You're basically going to...
to make that reval revenue neutral?
You're basically going to, you're going to set the mill rate at budget, you know, at budget times, and whatever you guys decide to set it at, we, we've been showing you at the current mill rate, you guys could decide to set it at whatever you want to.
There's no law that says you can't set it where it's at right now.
Are we required to reset the mill rate to make, in light of the reval, are we required to reset the mill rate so that it's revenue neutral, and then we raise from, from that point?
I don't think it's required.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, um...
I don't know that it's required.
Although, I don't know if it's required. I mean, I can confirm that, but I, I don't think it's required.
That's, that's a, a question that I would like you to see if we can get a response from either legal or through your sources, Mike, to see what our obligation is with respect to the, the reval.
Yep.
What, um, I guess my next question would be, in, in, Mike, my preference would be what you just expressed, I think, to reset the mill rate and then discuss the tax increase from that base, keeping the revenue neutral. That would be my preference. But my, my next question is, what's our anticipated return to the general fund right now, from the town and the board?
About $50,000 from each side.
$50,000 town, $50,000 board?
Yeah. And let, Brian, unless that number has changed for you guys, I know last we talked, it was, you were thinking around 50.
Yeah, no, I think right now, that's, that's a good, good number to go with, we're finishing up our third quarter analysis, so it could change, but I don't think it'll be changing too drastically from that number.
Okay, so through, through the chairman, I mean, I would ask the superintendent, Superintendent Zaplin, you, you implemented a budget freeze, correct, on your budget?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's, that saved you a bunch of money, and that's resulted in your $50,000 anticipated return, even in light of unprecedented expenses due to COVID-19?
That is true.
Okay, has the town implemented a budget freeze? I guess the question would be for the CFO or for the first election?
Yeah, there's no official budget freeze, but we're running below budget in every department.
Well, I, I mean, my, my opinion, I don't know what the other board member's opinion is, I, I would recommend strongly that town implement a budget freeze effective immediately to try and conserve. Like, I know, for instance, it was another light winter with public works, I would not want to see that money spent on something else, I want to see that money returned. Because when we're forced here with, faced with some hard choices, I'd rather see us conserve, because that's going to go back in and give us more money to use to fill this gap.
There were years when Joe Telesana was on the board, I'm sure he would support it, we did, we did have to go through budget freeze. And Joe, was it the year that we had that bad storm, the Alfred Storm or something like that, but it was your recommendation and we followed it, we did a budget, budget freeze that year?
Well, yeah, I think what Bill's asking for is admirable, but you know, you've got one quarter left, and it's, it's a small portion of the budget, but I, I would assume that the selectmen are performing as diligently as possible to this next, right, day.
I just don't want the department heads spending down their balance on discretionary items, there's still a lot of discretionary money left. I mean, let's have the discussion, you know, with the CFO in the first election before they expend the money. If it's not absolutely needed, let's save it.
I mean, there, there's just three months left, there's ways of doing that, I mean, call it a freezer, you could just review the expenses, I mean, you know, before they spend them, and we're, we're not going to allow them to transfer, we won't allow them to transfer between accounts. If they, if they have money left over in overtime, if they have money left over in salt, you just can't transfer out of there.
I mean, training should have a lot of money left, they're not sending people to training, they're not, I mean, there should be, and $10,000 here, $5,000 here, I mean, that's real money, when you add it all together, town-wide. The library's been closed all year, I mean, there's a lot of cost saving, that could go on and on and on.
I think you guys could do that.
I agree.
It's a good idea that you, when you said you could look at it, because you're with it every day, and you'd know if it was even possible, we don't know that.
Well, let's, uh, we'll, we'll go over each department's budget with a director, and we'll talk about what they can, what they can freeze.
And can you, Brian, can you send us balances today, effective today? Just so we can see the balances and then see what's spent for the rest of the year, just to make sure, thank you.
Remind me of the number in the general fund that exceeds the, the minimum?
Minimum for what?
We have a minimum that we want to keep for, to maintain our bond rates.
That's right.
16.8% is the fund balance recommended. It's two months, it equals 16.8%.
And how much, in terms of dollars, are we in excess of that at the moment?
About $490,000.
That's too much of operation if you need it.
But that leaves us with about a million and a half, if we, if we reset the mill rate based on the reevaluation, if we adjusted it down, we'd still, we'd need to come up with about a million and a half to balance the current expense budget, right?
Right, you'd need a 1.5 mil, you would reduce it down 1.46 mils, and then you would need 1.46 mil tax increase to get it back, to you, bring it back to the same, to the current mill rate. And if you kept it at the current mill rate, you would spend $489,000 of fund balance to level the budget, and you would be right at that 16.8%.
I still think we need to... It's my, it's my, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead, Joe. I'm a little, I'm a little bit concerned about the, the revenue from this current act, because I, I don't think we know enough about what restrictions are going to be in place or not in place. I've heard conflicting stories about the level of availability of those funds. You know, I, I know we're going to have to increase whether we, I think the right thing to do is though, is to adjust the mill rate and then make whatever increase is necessary. I don't know how much everybody else on the board thinks we can increase once we adjust the mill rate. I'd like to hear some thoughts on that. And I, I also think that the town and the Board of Ed need to go back to their budgets with a, with a, with a fine-tooth comb and see what they can take out of those budgets. There's got to be some room in there for further reduction. The school, the school side of things is, I don't know whether it's changed, Brian, but I think you were down 40 or 45 kids this year from last year. The projected amount is down 40 or 45 kids. So you're facing a continuing drop in enrollment, and I know that's all hard to deal with, but...
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's not an easy correlation if this number of students, that number of staff, just because of the way the programming, you know, is, is set up at, at, at the different levels. We still need to have teachers, you know, in the elementary school for these kids, high school, we have a little bit more flexibility, because it's not as structured as a program. You know, but I know that we have been, over the past years, looking at reducing staff when, through attrition, when that became available, and I know that the Board of Education, I would assume that this board is not looking to lay off large numbers of teachers, at least from the Board of Education standpoint, I know that's true.
I still think there's, we need more information on this federal money, e, even if we won't get access to it for another 16, 18 years or whatever, you know, because it, you have to look at the long-term, two-year cycle of this, of this budget, because I just think there's, why would they have all this, these millions of dollars sitting out there if they're all restricted, the word of their uses is problematic in towns of our nature? And the criteria seems to be very fluid at the moment, based on my experience at the state. So, I, I don't know how you ascertain the information, but I think we need to press...
We ascertain the information when the information is available.
Right.
And, and we've been getting it as soon as it becomes available. If it's not available, I, I, I don't have an answer for you.
No, I understand, like, I'm not blaming you or, or the town or anything.
No, no, I'm just telling you, yeah.
I think, you know, as you go through your series of informational meetings and briefings, I think the picture will get a little clearer, but, you know, we're under time constraints here a little bit, but I'd like to buy us a little more time until you get more information, I don't know if that's possible.
Well, we have a calendar here that shows you your timeline, I mean, that was the one we voted on. I, I guess we, you know, it's just a guideline. If you go, you know, if you go beyond a certain point, then, then the whole, the whole referendum and town meeting and all that stuff gets changed. That doesn't say you can't do that, it's just that...
I'm still getting there, hold on.
So...
Yeah, so, this date right here, the April 12th, is, it's basically your drop dead date. Beyond that date, you can no longer post your public hearing notice on time, so you have to push back the public hearing, which then pushes back the annual town meeting, which then pushes back the budget referendum vote dates as well. And I don't remember the exact wording of when the annual town meeting has to land on, but I've...
It's a, it's a day and night.
Yeah, it's...
It's a day and night, it's two weeks.
Yeah, it's, it's, has to be after the first Monday, but, like, I, so, but yeah, so April 12th right now is your current, like, kind of drop dead date, and if it goes beyond that, everything, other items have to start getting rescheduled.
A few years ago, there was an argument to try to delay the referendum till, I think it was August, and that didn't fly well when we were at that meeting.
I do remember that.
And that means that we have a lot of thinking to do right now, see how we can make it work.
There, there isn't any money in any of these funds that you're going to be able to use as revenue, you're just going to be able to use them for COVID-related expenses.
Yeah.
Is it, and that is what we're doing now.
Right.
I mean, that is what Brian has done, to keep his budget in check, that's what we have done, to keep our budget in check for things that have not been budgeted for, and this is what we're using the COVID money for. It doesn't say that you can decide to use it to keep your tax rate down.
But the problem is we're just doing it.
In fact, it says you can't, it says you're not supposed to.
But we've been keeping the level down, even last year, didn't we?
Well, if that's the case, then wouldn't, wouldn't the return to the fund balance be greater?
No, because the, the expenses, the expenses that we're doing with the budget right now are not go, are the, we're going with, with COVID are not going against the budget, they're going against...
Right, they're for unbudgeted.
The CARES Act money, they're unbudgeted, going against the CARES Act money that we received from the state.
Okay.
Which is why we wanted to set up that separate fund for this kind of money and those kind of expenses, so that you could see the impact and, and the difference between the, the grant money versus what's going out in the expense money, so...
And so right now, between the Board of Ed and the town side, we're putting together about a, about a $100,000 package to send off to FEMA, and I'm sure they'll scrutinize this and that and the other, and some of the items won't necessarily get reimbursed through by FEMA, so they'll be 100% covered by CRF instead, but we're hoping to get, you know, at least $65,000, $70,000 of that money paid back through FEMA, which the 25% offset would then be the CRF money that we've received from the state as well.
And so, just to clarify, people like fire, police, et cetera, we've been giving them a budget code or a budget indicator at the end of their budget code that will let us know that this is COVID-related expenses for payroll, for, for whatever, and so that's all been tracked separately, that's how we're, we're doing this, so none of the money really affects the budget itself.
All of those are, I mean, the current fiscal year budget, what are you saying?
What's that?
All of that, all those transactions are outside of the current fiscal year.
Correct.
Yes, and will be in the future.
So they don't impact the, the return to fund balance at all?
Yeah, now I get it, now it makes sense.
So, and we're not, we're not saying fire, to police, to school, hey, budget for what you think are your COVID expenses next year. No, no, just budget like there is no COVID, and if those expenses come up, then we have this pot of money over here through these grants to meet that.
That's better.
Right.
So that leaves us with three options, cuts, tax increase, or greater fund balance.
Yes.
I think, Mike, it would be good to know what we need to do with the mill rate and the reval first, and then, then we can decide how to play the next, as Joe just indicated, the next three factors.
Okay.
I think it's less concerning to what Bill's point said, if some of that is solar farms, a lot of vehicles, vehicles that are a luxury choice, if you, I mean, you've got to have a car, you know, if that likes us, I guess, I don't know. So it, it, it does have less of an impact, at least from my perspective, it's not on, you know, housing as much as, as other, other taxable property, that analysis is...
Is it, I mean, Mike, Mike Parker, do you think it's worth, kind of, I think the strategy, I think I agree with the strategies. I mean, number one, if, if maybe we can get from the board and the town a little bit better estimate when they go back through and look at their current year's budget of how much they're going to estimate their return to fund balance, and then maybe what cuts would look like, you know, maybe the town and the board making cuts to their budget, what that would look like, and then also, you know, what a modest tax increase would look like, and kind of the combination of things, and maybe hold another meeting or two?
I would, I don't care, how many times we need?
I agree with you, Bill, I think, I think I'd like to underst, if we're going to have to raise the mill rate, I understand that we're going to have to do that, but I'd like to understand from what point we're going to raise it.
That's right.
And I, I, I just have it in my head, and I could be absolutely wrong, but I just have it in my head that we, based on what we've always done, we've always adjusted the mill rate and then gone from there.
Yeah.
I don't remember that the last time we dealt with reval, but I was, I was very green, so I don't necessarily remember.
I'm respecting your memory here, but I, I've never heard of that, and I'm going to look to see if that is in fact the case, so...
I don't, I don't remember it last time.
Maybe not.
Done it, and then done the, the increase to...
Right, I mean, it would have been during my time last year.
Is that required by law or statute or something?
No, I, I don't think so, but we'll, we'll check on it, and it'll be with OPM most likely, but we'll check on it.
Okay, that'd, that'd be good.
That'd be great.
Uh, is there anybody else, does anyone else wish to say anything on the discussion that we've been having here?
Do we, do we have any targets to go back to the town and the Board of Education as far as reductions? I mean, what, what that would look like?
I'd let them make their best effort.
I, I would say with one quarter of the year left, let's see what we can scrub out of it. You're not talking like it's a half a year, or, you've got three quarters of the year under your belt already, so, and the winter's behind us, so let's see what we, what we can do.
I just hate to take too much from fund balance.
I agree.
I don't feel comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I think it's better to go, I think the tax analysis is...
I, I agree with all the steps that you've taken here, so that's fine.
Yeah.
All right, uh, next time, I'm just, capital budget approval.
Yep.
Anybody want to address that issue?
Scroll my screen back over there, hold on. All right, so, these are the items, I don't know, Mike, Joe, either one of you want to talk about them, you all made a run through them?
Yeah, I mean, you can run through them, Brian.
All right, um, so, last Wednesday, CIP met, they finalized their budget, they did remove two items from the original proposal. One was a $50,000 plow truck, and the other was a $55,000, I don't think it was a plow truck, but it was some other type of truck. So it did bring our, our request down for capital. The first item is repairs at the fire department, these have been continued annually, they are a little sub-eligible for reimbursement, doesn't impact your, your transfer to, to capital at all. The next one was $150,000 snowplow with sander. I know Mike asked Todd specifically about this. Todd said that the truck that he is replacing is 20 years old and currently has a cracked frame and is inoperable, so he, he doesn't have much choice but to replace it, or he'll be... or he'll be down a truck on the road come next winter. DPW pickup truck for $45,000, replacing the DPW director's 20-year-old SUV. It's beginning to have electric problems and transmission problems. So it's, it's becoming more, more to fix it than it, than it is worth in value. New police cruiser, replacing the 2011 police cruiser that's down there right now, the Crown Vic, the gray one.
Oh, I know the one you were in.
This would be a $48,750 purchase. The SCBA packs were approved at a previous CIP meeting so that John could begin getting the order together. They are still being part of the fiscal '22 budget. We still won't take delivery or pay for them until after July 1. However, the packs that he's replacing do expire on June 30th, and on that date, he has to take them out of service. We have guaranteed leases already. These are fiscal '19, fiscal '20, and '21 packages that have been put together in prior years, plus the long-term solar lease that's on the school roofs. These leases total $212,466. And CIP put $25,000 of discretionary funds in, on the town side. Brings the town's total to $596,216. On the Board of Education side, there was a security system upgrade. Upgraded the security system at Summers Elementary School. It is a LOSAP-eligible project, so it does not go against your transfer in either. A $55,000 dump truck at the Board of Education. This is replacing an old maintenance vehicle that they're using currently. It's not as bad as the van, Mike, but, you know, it, it needs to be replaced. And then also $25,000 of discretionary funds for the Board of Education, so their total would be $136,670, a combined total of $732,886. So down below, what I've done is break it down for fiscal '22. The beginning estimated fund balance is $41,790. A $300,000 transfer in from general fund, plus a $77,548 transfer in from the ambulance fund. Brings that fund balance up to $419,338. We would be proposing financing for quite a few items on the listing. So on the second page, I kind of grouped them so you could see which ones would be leased. It would be the snowplow, the three light, pieces of light equipment, and the dump truck over at the Board of Education. All three of those, or all those items would be part of a lease package. CIP was given the preliminary quote and what that meant. It works out to about, what would this, with the two other items coming out, it would be about a $80,000 to $90,000 a year payment, probably closer to 80. So that's where we get this 271, 110 proposed purchasing. We leave a capital fund balance of $148,228. We do anticipate down the road, the, or during the year, the need for the police body cameras and car cameras. And, and so that's why we, we want to leave that, that fund balance there, so that that way we do have the available money on hand when that project finalizes and does come to fruition, that we can afford to pay for it and be able to go through the necessary steps rather than having to propose a tax levy for, you know, a hundred thousand dollar project when the time comes. So with all of that said, the, the motion to approve would involve proposing the $300,000 transfer from general fund and approving the combined total requests of the projects.
As recommended.
As recommended, if, if anybody would, wants to make that motion.
Move to approve for discussion?
I'll second that.
Where'd you go, Parker? It was moved and seconded by Kathy.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I, I didn't hear the, you moved to approve the discussion?
Yeah.
I moved to approve the proposal for purposes of discussion, for the purposes of discussion.
Yep, and Kathy seconded it.
All in favor?
Hold on, I had some discussion.
Bill had some discussion.
All right.
Okay.
Sorry, I just didn't pick up on it. Go ahead, Bill.
That's okay. So I, I know that the CIP committee's worked over several meetings on this and heard proposals from, from directors, et cetera. I would imagine that was before we realized we had a $200,000, or $2 million gap in our budget, because we had not yet seen the revenue until tonight. I'm just wondering, I mean, looking through some of these expenses, I mean, I'm wondering if there's things that, that there's either an alternative or things that we can reduce, because it would have a big impact. I mean, for instance, the town's discretionary funds, you know, can we defer those for a year and cut them? The, the pickup truck for the Public Works Director, I think the previous one, did the pickup of the plow, reading through the details, and bought used. Is there an option to buy another used one to save money? You know, some of those things like that, I mean, are there some options that we could maybe look at to, to cut this total amount down?
I know on the vehicle side, they have a formula they use to rate the vehicles and the vehicles that are scheduled to replace that are at what they consider end of life. There's other options within that outside of vehicles. That would be up for discussion.
Well, when you, when you consider the lease rate on this annually, you probably can't buy anything used for the same, same price. I mean, it's, you know, you don't know what you're buying when you buy used. You're buying probably more, or, or, you know, a lot of maintenance expense, et cetera. I mean, we've done this in the past, and it hasn't worked out.
Okay, I mean, I'm just concerned that we're accumulating a lot of liability. I mean, we're carrying over $212,000 from, from prior leases that we're stuck with. So I mean, I'm just wondering if there's options that.
And those are on a rolling schedule also, so they do, they do start to fall off annually.
No, of course.
We only carry three or four at a time.
So next year, the one, the last will fall off.
Yeah, next year, the '19 will fall off, and we'll have '20, '21, and '22. Now those three, because '20 was done. Generally, we do them where we pay, where we pay upfront. So the first year is paid at sign, at time of lease. With the fiscal '20 lease, it was paid in arrears, so that one won't actually be paid off until fiscal '25. So that one will continue on for three more years. But '19, the fiscal '19 lease will pay, will be done in this upcoming budget year.
So, I mean, to answer your question there, Bill, I mean, the Public Works had a $150,000 truck package here with three, three vehicles. We cut two of them out.
Yeah.
And we're letting them get this one for 45, so, you know, I think that.
And that's on lease, though, so it's like five years.
It's on lease, yeah. I mean, I don't know, Joe, Joe, Joe T., you want to add anything to this, or?
No, I mean, years ago, we, we always, when we were in difficult times, we cut the capital budget, and then, then we had to bond, frankly, to catch up, because we were so far behind on trying to maintain our infrastructure. So I'm comfortable with this, you know, going forward, but, you know, I'm just one vote. No, I, I don't think there's anything terribly extreme in the, in the vehicle budget or in the capital budget as a whole. But it seems to make sense that maybe we should set it aside until next week until.
That's fine.
We have some alternatives from Mike and Brian as to how we might deal with the, you know, what I, maybe I'm jumping the gun here, but Mike, I'd like to see some solutions to how we're going to, how we're going to make up this $2 million gap.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'd like to see some clear math on that. Some suggestions you might have as to how we might solve the problem. I mean, if it involves a mill increase, we know that that's going to, you know, have to take up a big part of it. Whether we do the revow and lower the rate or whatever, we're still going to have to go out and probably get a million dollars from the citizens.
I think so.
In terms of mill rate increase this year. Where's the other million going to come from? We might be able to get a half a million out of the general fund. That leaves us with a half a million to go. I'd like to see the, the school board and the, and the town try to find some additional funds in their budget, get us a little closer. And, and, you know, maybe you have some ideas, Mike. I, I mean, I can't believe that of all this government money, some of it isn't going to redound to our benefits. Some of it's going to filter in here somehow. They've already started to talk about releasing some of the constraints on use of the funds. But I, I'm not looking at that as a panacea, but I am looking to you, Mike, to try to come up with some alternatives as to how we might play this out so that maybe next time we meet, next week, we could, we could have some real choices in front of us.
Okay. You know, Mike, I completely agree with you. I think that, I mean, and I'm not per se saying that we don't need to buy SCBA or a police cruiser or a plow. I'm just, I agree with you. I think deferring it to look at the whole picture is the best solution in what choices we have, so we can look at everything.
Do we want to make a motion to table?
I'll draw my vote soon.
You want to draw, Joe?
Yeah.
That's a good discussion.
I think we're losing your audio again, Parker. Was that you talking?
Trying to.
There you are.
I, I, I say that I understood that Joe had withdrawn the motion. Do you have any other further comment on what I've said, or did you not hear me, Joe?
No, it sounds correct. I think we need some more data and some more time to get a little clearer picture on everything. Hopefully, the two boards can, can come back with some, some additional help for us on the overall picture.
Yeah, I agree with both of you over there.
All right, so then the next item would be the budget flyer. We can obviously skip that.
And, and anything I said in there was only for discussion purposes.
If you guys want to look it over, see if you like the format, you know, so forth, but. Yeah, it's been the same for 20 years, you know.
It wasn't. It was one year it was really bad.
If I can, if I can interrupt, and I know this is a regular meeting, but I would like to try to fill out the, the CIP committee. We need to appoint someone from the Board of Finance to fill the slot that was vacated by the old guy.
Is that you?
Yeah.
I only knew one old guy. I wasn't sure who you were talking about.
Well, thanks.
But since Bud's here, I didn't think you were talking about him.
If there's no, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on the matter. If you do, please speak up. It was my thought to suggest Bill Meyer for a slot.
I think he'd be a good one.
Anybody have any thoughts, or anybody else who would like to have the position?
I would second that unless there's other people who aren't interested.
I'd certainly be willing to serve, so thank you for the nomination.
I agree.
Okay, the, the salary isn't that great. It comes with a lot of prestige.
I was the one I was on it.
Look at Joe.
I didn't like it when I was on it.
If there's no, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of, of Bill Meyer taking over that slot at CIP?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brian, did you have other matters you wanted to attend to?
You guys just have minutes to approve. We have February 22nd, March 9th, and March 16th.
I read them.
We have everybody here for, in attendance, so, yep.
Make a motion to approve the February 22nd minutes. I have an amendment, though, to those minutes. Under Section 7, where it says other business, Bill Meyer made a motion to create a special-use COVID release fund seconded by Joe Tolosano. That was not the full motion. I discussed this with Brian. We played back the tape. The full motion was, I'd like to make a motion to create a special-use fund subject to rules created by the Board of Finance at a later date. That was the full motion. So I'd like to accept those minutes as amended for February 22nd.
Second.
Discussion. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Yeah, to amend the minutes.
Somebody going to second that?
I'll second it.
Kathy, seconded.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries? Brian, you're going to take care of the amendment?
Yep.
We have two other minutes to do.
March 9th me, or March 9th minutes. Yep, we've got everybody here.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve these minutes for March 9th. I add one, again, minor correction to those. For Section 4, Kathy Devlin made a motion to accept the budget as presented, seconded by Bill Meyer. That motion was made for discussion purposes only, so just to add that.
You wanted for, you wanted to say for discussion purposes?
For discussion purposes only.
Okay.
Yes.
That was true.
That, with that one amendment, then I, I think that otherwise they're good, so.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Give a second to that motion? Second? Okay. All in, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's one other set of minutes, Brian?
Yep, March 16th.
Any amendments to this, the March 16th minutes? Hearing no. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 16th?
I'll second. I'll second, Bill Meyer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Is there anything else? Mike, Brian?
I don't have the transfers.
No, I just want to know when your next date is, the next Monday?
Do you want to do next Monday for a meeting?
Wait a minute. What is the next Monday?
Will you have time to include some numbers, and will the two boards have opportunity?
You want to do it that way? That's fine.
And we can either do that, April 5th. Let's see, when does the selectmen meet again? Selectmen meet again on April 1st, so they will, they will meet before April 5th, but not before March 29th.
But as one of the things that Mike sent to us and I put on hold was that the Monday, the 29th, would be available only if needed, and so I think we should take that 29th.
Oh, I agree.
You want to do next Monday? Everybody's available next Monday?
I don't think we have a lot of time. We've got a deadline.
I mean, we're going to crunch numbers. That's what we do, Joe.
All right. You gonna be able to have some alternatives for us by the 29th?
We will have you alternatives by the 29th.
If we don't, we won't, we won't schedule it if we don't.
And by we, I mean Mike and the mouse in his pocket.
Well, we've also asked Brian and Bud to take a look at their budgets, too. Are you going to have time to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we'll have to get, can you guys get a, a special meeting this week?
I think we need to meet with the directors first.
Well, yeah, we can hammer through the directors, too.
Come up with the most, and then, then he'll have to run by them again.
What about doctors? I mean, I can come up with some numbers. I can't convene a Board of Education meeting to prove that, but I certainly can, you know, take a look at the budget and be available. You know, anything that, with the understanding that anything that I, I put out there, I do have to eventually get it approved by the Board of Education.
But they're, they're going to, they're going to more or less have to approve by default anyway, because it's the Board of Finance telling them to reduce it by that amount. If, if that's what they say, if that's what they agree upon. And the same goes for the selectmen.
Yep, exactly.
So we'll call the. So we'll call the numbers preliminary.
That's good.
Sounds good.
All right, then, the 29th it is, is that, is that fair?
Yep.
Yep, it's good with me.
Okay, how about you, Bill, Bill Salca, did you make it on the 29th?
Again, we have an accreditation visit that week, but I'll be done by Saturday.
Okay, good. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else? Can I hear a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All righty, thank you.
You guys did a great job, I, I, it's stunning, it's, it's like depressing, but knowing what...